I'm going to call to order this joint meeting of the Plan Commission and the Monroe County Board of Commissioners for the sole purpose of considering an agreement. And Mr. Wilson, will you take the role for the Plan Commission and for the Board of Commissioners, please?
Larry, you're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hang on.
We're getting echo, so I think we've got, maybe I have a couple of.
Jackie, can you go ahead and take the role while I get this straightened out?
I think I just straightened it out, Larry. Try again.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yep. Great. Hello, Mr. Pittsford.
Hello there, how are you?
Good, we're about ready to take role. We just called the order, so perfect timing.
Well, I was just getting off a phone call from another issue to be resolved for today. Simpler issue.
Good.
Okay, let me start with the Commissioners. Julie Thomas.
Here.
And Penny Giffens.
Here.
Lee Jones.
Here.
We have all three Commissioners present, and I'll go through the Plan Commission as well. Amy Thompson. Bernie Garitas. I heard Bernie earlier. David Warren.
Here.
Jeff McKempe.
Here.
Jim Stainbrook. Julie Thomas.
Here again.
Tron and Ray Randolph. And Margaret Clemmons.
Here.
Did I get everybody?
No.
Larry Pittsford.
Here.
Thank you. Tron, you got, so we have somebody on the phone, but I don't know who it is, and we do have Bernie, and I know Bernie is present, so can we count him as here? Okay, so we'll go ahead and turn this over to Mr. Schilling of Monroe County Legal.
You're on mute, Dave.
There we go. Thank you very much, Jackie. As noted by Commissioner Thomas, the purpose we're here is to consider a mediation agreement. And I would say towards the end of September, the parties agreed to engage in settlement discussions, and 12 points were developed as discussion topics. The defendants in this case, the Huff Trusts, came up with an agreement and sent to us. We came up with an agreement in response, and neither effort inspired the other party. So we decided to try mediation, and we're able, we're fortunate enough to have former federal magistrate judge William Hussman act as a mediator. And the mediation took place yesterday, and after 10 hours of back and forth, 13, I'd say 13 material terms were agreed to, to be presented today for approval by the Commissioners and the Plan Commission. I have not received the formal agreement yet, but we can go through the points that were agreed to during yesterday's mediation. Jackie, do you have a copy of those? Okay.
Can you put them on the screen, Jackie, as he goes through them? Thank you so much. Excellent. Perfect. Thanks.
This, this is the 12 points that were the basis of our mediation discussions, so it's not the actual terms that we agreed to. So as I go through, I'll just start through this and say, the number one, that's the saying, the county will not take any action on past logging activities, and that's consistent with a, a term that appears later, to the effect that the county will dismiss its claim. Number two is the one that's, I think, the, the heart of this agreement, and that is that the county MS4 Coordinator and an engineer chosen by the Huff's will jointly assess the current status of the erosion control on the Huff property. If no, no problems are found, they'll make note of that. If there are problems, the Huff or the, the engineer and the MS4 Coordinator will, will decide what remedy needs to be implemented, the Huff's will implement that remedy. And if there's any disputes regarding the remedy, they'll work with the Assistant Planning Director to resolve that. If that is unable to result in a resolution, then we would go to mediation for that. The third term would be that the Planning Director would perform all non-delegable duties relating to the Huff property, and the Assistant Director will perform all duties that may be delegated. Number four, the Huff's will produce a map of the urban area that complies with 3674-1103, and that's where the urban area is defined as eight homes per quarter square mile. The map will be approved by the county if it meets the statute, and any future permits or development activities on the Huff property will be guided in part by that map. Number five, the county will not engage in any extraordinary communications with state or federal agencies regarding the Huff property, does not apply to communications made in the normal course of performing duties required by statute or ordinance. Frequently, our ordinances require us to communicate with IDIM inspectors and DNR personnel, and so that's not prohibited. Number six, the county will not advocate against the issuance of permits by IDIM, DNR, or the Army Corps of Engineers with respect to the Huff property. And that's something that the county just has never done anyway. So at the conclusion of the processes described in, in number two above, so this is after the erosion control issues have been assessed, the county will issue a press release that, that notifies the public that the county has reached an agreement with the Huff's to resolve the lawsuit. The county has determined that the site is in compliance with the county erosion control requirements, and thus does not oppose a threat to the, to the county water supply. Number eight, the county dismisses its action against the Huff. Number nine, the Huff's will dismiss their counterclaim against the county. Number 10, the parties had agreed that any future disputes arise relating to the enforcement or application of the settlement agreement, or the facts of the case, will be resolved by mediation. Number 11, the county and the county's insurance provider will pay a total of $50,000 to settle the Huff's counterclaim. And 12, the counties will execute mutual releases that include all claims against each other, essentially, and the releases do not include any admissions of liability by either party. And that, that is the material terms of the settlement agreement that were reached yesterday as a result of mediation. So the purpose of today's meeting is to, you know, as I noted, to consider that the agreement is prohibited, or presented as is and may not be amended today. We have, I mean, certainly there are issues in here, in this agreement, that, there are issues that may crop up regarding the administration of this agreement. I think yesterday we had an understanding with the Huff's Council that if we had issues like that, that we would just discuss them informally and come to a resolution. And that's, that's the essence of the agreement, and I would turn it back to you for questions or.
Okay. So I would just note that present at the mediation representing these few bodies was Margaret Clemmons, who's president of the Plan Commission, and myself, as, as a member of the Board of Commissioners. I just wanted to see if, Mr. Wilson, if you had anything you wanted to add at this point, or Mr. Baker, anything that we missed?
I, I think that's fine. The, it's really kind of an outline of agreement, since we haven't seen the entire agreement And the only thing I will say is, as, as Planning Director, our intent is to treat the Huff's the same as we do any other applicant for a permit. If they come in for a permit, we'll treat them the same as everybody else, and I want to make sure that's clear, that we, as far as we are concerned, this agreement does not bestow any, moving forward, any special treatment in regard to new permits, aside from the logging permit, which was in the past. And if that's wrong, I want to know, and if we can't follow what is required by the statutes and our ordinance, I want to know that too. The agreement should be consistent with our ordinance and state statute, and if it's not, we shouldn't agree to it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Baker, you were also, Mr. Wilson was present yesterday during mediation marathon. Mr. Baker, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Thank you, Julie. No, I don't.
Okay, thank you so much. Ms. Clemmons, I'm going to turn it over to you to lead the section of questions and comments from the Plan Commission, if you would.
Yes, and I'd just like to make one comment, and that was, the goal yesterday was to get the Huff's into compliance so that we could proceed normally, like our normal operations require, and the code requires, and to that extent, I think this agreement moves us toward that direction. And so, that being said, I'd like to open up the floor to questions, and Jackie, do you recognize the people? Or, I'm not exactly sure, because I don't Zoom that often, frankly.
Sure. Yeah, I can call on Plan Commission members first, Margaret, so let's see, David Warren has a question.
Yes, Mr. Warren.
Yeah, and thanks for all of your work on this, too. Could you explain point number four to me? I'm just not, not clear what, what that's all about, about the Huff's producing a map of the urban area, in quotes.
Yeah, Dave, I'll work on that for you. The Indiana statute sets up a designation of urban areas and non-urban areas, and in urban areas, which are defined as any, any area where there are eight homes per quarter square mile, is treated differently in some respects than non-urban areas. And those respects relate to the alienation of mineral resources and forestry. So in a urban area, the county is, can regulate those activities. In a non-urban area, we are not allowed to take any action that prohibits the complete alienation of mineral or forestry resources. So the purpose of this map would be to say, certainly, it would relate to the slope restrictions in the eco-zone. In the urban area, those clearly apply. In the non-urban area, they don't apply if they would prohibit the complete alienation of mineral resources or forestry resources.
Okay, so in a sense, it gives us a little more control over protecting that area.
Well, yeah, it designates the area that we have control over, and I think the, there's some permits that will be applied for in the near future in that area, so it was important to get that designated as quickly as possible. We, we think, I mean, there's been maps around of that area for a while, and so we, we know what, what is encompassed there.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions of members of the Plan Commission or the Commissioners?
Looks like Jerry Pittsford has his hand raised. Go ahead, Jerry.
Yes, thank you, Jackie. Thank you, Margaret. My, my question kind of goes back to something that Dave referenced in the reading through here, and then in a part of the email exchange where concern was raised over the press release in saying that it is a matter of terminology that the Huff property is in compliance, which would imply that it had never been out of compliance. So my question is, and I, I don't, I did not follow this case, I don't think, started the, I was getting the reports, I don't know why, maybe it's because I wasn't on the Plan Commission at the time, I don't know. But anyway, my, my question is, was the Huff, the Huff property actually out of compliance with county ordinance, Dave?
Well, it's the county's position that they work. And the purpose, yeah, the purpose of this agreement is to, I mean, I guess, when we went into the mediation, Jerry, the, the idea is to, is to let go of your positions and focus on your interests, and I think the county's main interest is in, you know, ensuring that adequate erosion control exists on the site. So the provision that you're discussing in number two is designed to ensure that the site, as it exists on the day of the inspection, complies with the ordinance. If it does, then by definition, it should not be a threat to the lake or pose any harm to the drinking water, because it satisfies our regulations.
Okay.
So this, this doesn't reach back, it's, you know, we're not going to make this statement until, until item two has been satisfied.
Right. Whoever has his dogs barking, can we silence that, Mike? Because it's making it weird, Dave.
I wish. I'm, I'm, just a minute, I'll be back.
All right. I thought it's somebody else's mic. Was anybody else distracted, or is it just my feeble, feeble mind?
That's one of the things about Zoom, is everybody gets to know each other's kids and pets.
Yeah, exactly.
Feeling fans and.
Dave, I'm a dog person, I promise you, but I just have a hard time following you.
No, I, I apologize for that, Jerry. I, they've been quiet all morning, and of course, you know.
I was afraid, I was afraid for your safety.
It was their moment to shine, Dave, what can you say?
Yeah, yeah.
So my question, go ahead.
No, go ahead, please.
My, my question was, my, the gist of what I got, because I did do some of the reading back of news articles on this, it sounded like that there was an injunction, and then that was overruled, and then it sounds like in this agreement that there had been a statement that, according to state and federal guidelines, the clearcutting had been done in accordance with lawful terror rights, and that they had met the obligation of all the IDIM erosion control standards or even exceeded them. So the question is, did we, did the county then, at that point, say, hey, you know, maybe our ordinance is out of step? So is that, is that something we have to do? And I think Larry kind of hinted at that, too, is like, we want to know, is the county ordinance at odds with state and federal guidelines in terms of logging? And if so, are we going to have to undertake some correction on that?
Well, I don't, you know, I mean, that's, that's not, I don't believe our ordinances are out of step with those guidelines, but you may be confusing two different cases. The county has never had an injunction against the, the other side in this case, and.
Okay.
So I guess the, the point of this agreement is to say, we are looking forward, we're not going to try to resolve each issue, we're saying. Each site has its own views, we're going to put those behind us, we're going to focus on, on the, the, making the condition or ensuring that the condition of the property is compliant. If it is, great, let's move on. And I think the rest of the, I think one, one of these terms that perhaps I didn't read was that, let me see, in the future, well, let me see, where is it? That the Huff's would apply for all residential and commercial and, and permits in the future. So I think, I think the intent is to say, you know, we're going to move forward, get the site, make sure that the site is nailed down, and then just move forward.
Okay, well then, what specifically was the counterclaim that we're paying out on then? If it's not because we went after an enforcement that was ill-founded, what, what are we paying the $50,000 for?
Well, we're not saying that the enforcement was ill-founded, Larry, or Jerry, what we're saying is that, you know, we're not even going to get into that. The counterclaim is based on defamation and due process claims against the county. So we worked with the insurance company on that provision, and they, they felt that $50,000 was a reasonable settlement for that because of the expense and the time involved in resolving those issues.
Okay, so the counterclaim really had nothing to do with the legitimacy or legal standing of our ordinance as, as we enforced it?
The, the counterclaim related to statements that were made during a public meeting and the process that was used to file the lawsuit, not the actual claims in the lawsuit itself.
Okay, all right.
I see Jeff has his hand raised, and then Tron. Jeff?
Yes, thanks. I just wanted to make sure that the intention behind number two is that the MS4 Coordinator, along with the engineer, would have complete access or access to the entire property?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Tron, did you have a common question?
Yes, and it's still pretty much on topic with what Jerry was saying and how that relates to point two. I, I think I've said this a couple times, I, that, you know, I don't feel like the county really can have a position on the effects that this may pose to Lake Monroe, because they didn't go through those procedures at the beginning. I do see that we are kind of doing this after the fact, and, you know, with that statement, I would be way more comfortable. And I said, you guys probably wouldn't get too much of a fight from me unless it looks like the county might be rubber stamping something, and it's like the county has determined on this date that the site is in compliance with all county erosion control measures, period, and strike, and does not pose a threat to Monroe County watershed supply. We do not know what was done prior to it. I, I do not like that. I don't think we can definitively state that there was no adverse impact. I'm not going to say it was negative, but I feel like that is kind of opening a can of worms, and the fact that we weren't there at the beginning kind of gives them a, you know, monopoly term, get out of jail free card. And like I said, outside of that, I don't really have too many other comments or questions. Can I ask a question or make a comment related to what Tron just said?
Yes.
I, I think I kind of second that sentiment, the, the line about does not pose a threat to the Monroe County water supply, because I, it's hard to make that claim. I don't know if we have any flexibility to, to strike that. I guess my concern is, you know, while a handful of property owners here and there probably are not going to pose a threat to the water supply, if you have a bunch of property owners doing this, then the cumulative effect is such that it certainly could. I guess that concerns me a bit. That's my comment.
Yeah, I would, I would address both of you on that, and it was a point that was, that was discussed at some length yesterday. The original suggestion was that we say that there was originally no problem, and the county's response was, we cannot say that, but what we can say is if you bring it into compliance, and, and our MS4 Coordinator says it doesn't pose a threat to the water source, we will acknowledge that. And so that was, that's the forward-looking approach that this agreement reflects. We didn't, you know, we didn't want to go in and go back and have to go to court and prove all these things, in, and that we, the issues that we were concerned about would be the erosion control. So if, if the property is brought into compliance, we're looking forward. If we went to court and proved that, what would the court order? They would order you to bring the property into compliance. So we really feel like we're, we're getting the same thing we would have through this agreement as we would have, if we would have gone to court on that point. So that's, it just, it's a, it's, it's a situation where if we, if we would fight this and go to court, the jury trial is scheduled for almost a year away, there could be processes of appeals that would put that off even further, and then, under this agreement, we're able to get on the property quickly with our MS4 Coordinator and make sure that everything's okay, and we just, we felt that was, that was a good thing, rather than, than waiting a year or so and then have a court order us on the property to make sure that it was a good thing. That was the thinking, I think, behind that provision.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to go ahead and call on Bernie Garitas to see if he has anything to say, since he's on the phone, he can't raise his hand, or he can, but he shouldn't, because he's driving. Bernie, do you have anything you want to ask or comment on?
Yeah. Can you hear me, Julie?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Oh, great. Yeah, I, excuse me, Dave clarified my only point that moving forward, that the Huff's have acknowledged that there's an ordinance that they need to follow, that they, whether they followed it or not before, we're not getting into, but they have a process permitting and an ordinance that they need to go through and follow the processes that are laid out in the ordinances, and we're not going to have another mediation later if they decide to do something else.
Right.
And not file for a permit or not follow the, the ordinances, we've got it written, and Dave has explained that, I think, very well. So that was my, that was the only, that was the only question I had.
Thank, thank you, sir. Let me turn to my colleagues on the Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Jones, do you have any comments or questions?
Well, I, I do want to start out by saying, it seems to me that if we were to end up going to court, that would then make it clear that there was an original problem, whereas the statement that it appears we're going to be making doesn't make that clear, and that's kind of a problem for me. And I guess that's all for right now.
Okay. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I, I, we've only had this just for a few hours to really review, and we, we clearly don't have the, the formal agreement yet, and so I have several questions that I'd like to be able to ask advice of attorneys on, you know, so if we do move forward and vote on this, for example, do we pay the $50,000 before they are in compliance? Do we have the roads all repaired as part of the being in compliance? And I'd like to know, I thought one of the things that was raised earlier by Larry Wilson is, are we assured that what's in the formal agreement, which we don't have yet, of course, are we assured that, that the agreement is consistent with both state and, state statute and local ordinance?
Yes, Penny, the, the, the agreement is in, I believe, is consistent with state and local ordinance. If, if there are problems with the roads or the erosion control features on site, they will be addressed pursuant to section two, and the payment term, there was never any statement as to when that would be done. It would be like the timing on the number two process, that's done by agreement of the parties. It is our understanding that the Huff's have been talking with Assistant Director Jellin about filing permits in the very near future, and it is our belief that both sides want to get this going, this agreement going as soon as it's approved. So those are issues that I, I don't think are going to be problematic. So those are issues that I don't think are going to be problematic for either side. And so if you have any other questions on that, please let me know.
Well, I would like to point out to people that the state has tied our hands on the logging around Lake Monroe in many ways. They took away home rule from us, and so it's very frustrating because this is our drinking water, and we derive a lot of tourism dollars from this venue as well. So it's just difficult. I, some, especially Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Jones know that I'm the kind of person that really, really needs time to sit and think about things, and just having this for a few hours, it's frustrating for me to be expected to make a decision right away, because I'm sure if I look back over this and have more time, you know, like Number 10, I just noticed as we were going through this again this time, it says, "Parties agree that any dispute arising from the application or enforcement of this settlement agreement or underlying facts will be resolved by mediation." We don't know if it will be resolved by mediation. We can say it will go to mediation, but we can't guarantee it'll be solved by mediation. There's just little things in that wording that give me pause, and so I would really like to see the formal agreement before we vote on this.
The formal agreement apparently has just arrived. I got an email from Lee saying that he sent that to, he just got, received it from Judge Hussman, and he has sent that to me. And if you want to look at that, take a recess and then reconvene at a later time, that's But the question about mediation, those are, mediation, we've agreed to try mediation before we try anything else. Each side has the right to go to court if mediation doesn't work, and that's the same thing in Paragraph 2. If the remedies for any erosion control violations that are found or erosion control situations are found are not able to be agreed on, we go to mediation if there's a problem with that. You can always go to court, so.
Okay. It looks like Mr. Pittsburgh has a question. Do you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I did. Yeah, I did. It's kind of prompted by Commissioner Jones's observation that, you know, I thought she was expressing a preference to, in order to avoid the statement of Number 7, going ahead to court and saying, you know, hey, because we don't know this, we're going to go ahead and pursue our action because we don't want to say that it's always been in compliance. But then, would we still be, if we refuse the mediation here and go to court, could we still be subject to the $50,000 settlement in that case because of the?
Yeah, we don't know what would happen with that, Jerry. I mean, I guess the point that I was trying to make is...
Because they're separate cases, right?
Well, the point I was trying to make on Lee's point is that this statement was crafted after a lot of discussion so that the county did not admit that there was never a problem. This basically says, we're looking forward and we're going to get the property, make sure that the property's fit. If we would have gone to court and gone through all that process and found out that there was a problem, the order would be fix the problem, which I think we've addressed through this agreement. So it just saves us years of time, allows us to get on the property earlier and make sure that's done.
Okay. Well, if we refuse this mediated settlement and we go to court almost a year from now, the county's case against the Huffs would proceed, but also the Huffs' counterclaim against the county would go forward. Would we possibly be, as the county, would the county possibly be subjecting themselves to a settlement greater than $50,000 if the Huffs win their argument that we've agreed to settle here?
Yeah, it's possible. It's possible that that could happen, Jerry. We have agreed to the $50,000 with the insurance company's recommendation, and the insurance company's paying half of it, to avoid the expense of discovery, the time, the expenditure of county resources that it would take to move this case forward.
Right, and we're, and in that same settlement, we're not admitting, the county, I'm sorry, I keep saying we, like some royalty or something, but anyway, the county is not admitting any wrongdoing. They're simply saying, the county is simply saying, in order to avoid this process, concede your point of, and settle it for $50,000. But we could be subject to, the county could be subject to a much greater settlement or ruling than $50,000, not to mention cost, and that goes away if we don't accept this mediation, correct?
That is possible, certainly. And I would just say, you know, the county has engages in settlements frequently. We did on the zoning ordinance contract on the thinking that it would, it would just not be worth the county's time to try to recover that money when there's so many other things to do. And that comes into play here. We have to, you know, if you look at this in a vacuum, you know, there's lots of things you could be unhappy about. But if you look at this agreement in the context of everything we're trying to accomplish in the county, the amount of employees we have working on this that could be working on other things and doing other projects that are important, that's what leads me, as the county attorney, to recommend the approval because there's just so much else going on, and that's part of the calculus.
Right. And David, that's kind of where I wanted to hear you go on that, is, you know, the, what is actually at risk of not accepting this mediation is not just the question of whether or not the Huffs violated the ordinance, but the other question is, did the county actually, in fact, in some way err that defending ourselves against the counterclaim could end up being very, very costly for very little gain? And I'm assuming that's the case.
Yeah, it's possible. That's all I can say. You never know. That's the purpose of a mediation agreement, is that it gives you a chance to have some control over the outcome. And you're not going to get everything you want, and neither side does, but it gives you some certainty and the ability to move forward, and we think, you know, we're recommending approval because we think that's worth it.
Okay, it looks like we have two Plan Commission members that may want to speak, and then we want to have time to move on to the public as well.
Right. So we do, we do want to do that. I just want to note something that Commissioner Giffens mentioned and Mr. Schilling discussed, which is continuing, and I just want to put a marker there so we come back to it before we talk about this further as a group. But yes, we should go to Plan Commission members first and then to the public for questions and comments. That would be great.
I've got a question.
Go ahead, Bernie.
Okay, so I didn't mean to interrupt if I jumped ahead of somebody. Dave, you mentioned the cost of discovery that we would be avoiding. What is your estimate for the cost of discovery?
Well, you know, it would be thousands of dollars, but the one thing about discovery is that it takes up so much time. That's, from my perspective, is one of the larger costs. I really can't say how much discovery would cost, but it would be thousands. And so that's what went into it. That's what went into the decision to resolve this with a payment, is that there, and we, and, you know, it's unpleasant, it's not something we like to do, but it happens all the time. We have claims that we say, hey, there's no way we are responsible for that, but proving that or getting that resolved is going to cost a lot of money, so we agree to some kind of settlement. And that's a frequent practice in all counties.
Thanks, Bernie. And then Tron, you had your hand raised, but you put it down. Do you still have a question?
I do. It might be, there's a question, but it might be more of a statement. During the mediation, and again, this goes to Section 7, were they, were the Huffs amenable to maybe clarifying that we're only talking about erosion control measures and not the logging of the property subject to the state mandate? And if we could add that clarity within that section, I would think it would be way more representative to the truth, because I feel like some people here today might have a position saying something different to what the state says. And I feel like that just needs to be clarified a bit more, because if we have people reading this, they might think we're talking about the logging of the property and not just the erosion control measures.
Yeah, 7 relates to erosion control, Tron. That's what that's about.
Right, but could we put like a statement in there saying not including the logging subject to state code?
Well...
Were they amenable to that at all? That's kind of my question.
Yeah, we focused on erosion control because that's the purpose of all the regulations down there anyway, is to prevent erosion. So all the echo zone regulations, all the other regulations are designed to prevent erosion. So that was our primary interest, and that's what we focused on. Get that taken care of, and the county's primary interests have been satisfied.
So that didn't really answer my question.
Well, I mean, I guess it says the erosion control is compliant. It doesn't say anything else it is. I mean, the agreement says what it says, and we're really not in a position to change it. I mean...
Okay, so if we wanted to add anything for clarity, that would be a different agreement, and that's not what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Okay, so, thank you.
And issues can be clarified, you know, afterwards if the parties agree to that, but at this point, at this time, the question is, are these material terms that are in black and white before you today acceptable?
Okay, so thank you for that. So I think we do need to hear from the public with comments or questions. If you keep your comments as short as possible, we won't put a timer on, but if we find that it's getting onerous, we'll have to do that. And if you do have a question or comment, go to Participants tab, open that up, and click on Raise Hand. First, we have Mr. Kane.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you for letting me speak. It's my opinion that this whole affair demonstrates why the county needs ordinances in the first place. I refer, of course, to the ordinances designed to protect the watershed, but their strength lies in the ability to enforce them. This might be the first time a developer has really, really tested the county's resolve in enforcing the protection of our water resources. It's one thing for the county to enforce rules and prevent some guy from putting a shed in the wrong place, but the real test is enforcing the rules against a committed and deep-pocketed opponent. I think it's unjust for the county to force my neighbors out here on the lake to obey the rules while letting the wealthy developers slide, just because they hire an army of lawyers. I mean, it is expensive, I know this. You all should have known this long ago. To countersue, as I have done, is the way the game is played. Everyone in the Leo community knows this. The county's insurance company also knows this. My sense is that they are driving this settlement. They simply want to limit their financial exposure. That is their one and only concern. But they signed on for this, they are paid to assume this risk, and they should be told to do their job and back the county in this. I've seen some of the evidence that the county has managed to accumulate, and it's hard for me to think that the county does not have a strong case. Anyone who has seen aerial videos of the site would likely agree. The county has already introduced evidence photos of the shoreline waters labeled erosion plumes. The settlement in its current form contains no penalties for past violations. In fact, a payment to the Huffs, no compensation to taxpayers for the money spent on legal work for several years now. And it contains no examination of whether the Huffs, nearly three years of constant work, have in fact recontoured the slopes beside the lake to allow more building sites. Now, I know this case is not about logging, but it's about compliance to development ordinances. Well, in this case, the horse really has left the barn. The development and extensive system of roads has already been installed. You can just look at the photos. The county has already done lots of discovery, lots of other legal work, and should have pursued an injunction in court this past July when the case was on the court docket. The settlement forms a clear precedent for other developers, and if you allow the case to settle with these particular terms, I really hope you give serious thought to revoking these watershed and slope-related ordinances for these echo zones, because they're worthless, and we should just be honest about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kane.
Thank you, Mr. Kane.
All right. Let's see, we also have Ms. Mitchell Brooker. Would you like to offer any comments or ask any questions?
Yes, I agree with Mr. Kane that this does, it's a mistake for the county to look at this as a single action. This has had a lot of attention paid to it, and so what I see as a citizen is that if we, if a person has enough money, they can ignore the county and move forward and do what they want to do, and the county will back down. And I'm concerned about the precedent that sets and the message that it sends out to those people who would like to develop other properties on Lake Monroe. I'm also wondering how that you can come to a conclusion that the activities do not pose a threat to the Monroe County water supply when you haven't done the science to, and the monitoring to come to that conclusion. I think it's a mistake to assume that just because you comply with the MS4 regulations or even best management practices that there is no threat to the water supply. In order to be able to say that, I think you would have to do a lot more investigation than what is being suggested. And I agree with Mr. Warren that you need to look at this as a cumulative effect, and this is one of the things that most people are not completely aware of, but, you know, it's hard to say, point your finger to one place and say, you know, this is the one, this is the one that's causing the problem, because it's the cumulative effect of all the actions on the lake that cause problems. And so we need to be aware of that, not only the effect that this property has by itself, but also the effect that those that follow suit will bring about. I'm also very concerned that the commission is being asked to move, make a decision on a document they have not seen. That seems really not reasonable. And the, I just have to say that, having read the summary, my conclusion was, oh, the county made a mistake. They were wrong, and they're paying money. And if that's not the case, I think that this is not a good action to follow. And thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and have Mr. Schilling address your question, please, which is the, does not pose a threat to Lake Monroe?
Yeah, yeah, we have no evidence of that, and we've actually talked to people who said they would, they couldn't prove that. So you might suppose that, and it may be true, but we have no evidence. And so we have ordinances in place to protect the lake. The assumption is, if you violate those ordinances, you're harming the lake. If you are complying with those ordinances, you're not posing a threat to the lake. So, you know, theoretically, it's possible, but we have no way of proving that. We don't have the ability to prove that. And so we're trying to say, you know, our, our goal is to get people into compliance with our ordinance. It's not to prove that, that, that there's no problem whatsoever. We, we just, we simply can't do that. So if you meet our ordinances, the county, the county is satisfied. And so I, I don't know what to say beyond that is, you know, we can't deal with theory. We can't deal with speculation. We have to be able to prove what we're saying. And, you know, that's a problem in this case.
Could I clarify my question?
Sure.
Well, I think that what, what, what Mr. Schilling is addressing is, is that we can't prove that it poses a threat. And I would agree with that. But we also can't prove that it does not pose a threat. So that is what, where I, my question is, how can you, how can you say that?
Mr. Schilling?
Well, we can say if it complies with our ordinance from our perspective, from the county ordinance perspective, it doesn't pose a threat. And that's, I mean, that's the best we could ever do. We can't go beyond our ordinance and, and impose possibilities on people. I, I, I don't know what to say to that other than, you know, if you satisfy our ordinance, the county, the county is, is satisfied. I mean legislatively, that's, the objective of the ordinance is to accomplish certain things. If those are accomplished, then, then, then the, the county's objectives have been satisfied. Are they perfect? We can't say that, probably never are. But it just seems like a, a reasonable thing to say under the circumstances. If our MS4 coordinator goes out there and looks at it and says, I don't see anything that poses a problem, that's, that would be a, a true statement.
That would be a true statement.
Yes.
That's not what's written, though.
That is what's written. That is what's written.
Okay, thank, thank you so much. Let's, let's see if there's, we, we have a few more of our colleagues who do have questions, but before we do that, let's see if there's anyone else who has public comment or questions. And while we're at it, Mr. Schilling, we had a question I, I couldn't answer for Mr. Askins at B Square Beacon, which is who is our insurance provider?
One beacon.
Okay. Thank you. The other questions were addressed that are in the chat. I don't see any other hands raised for public comment. Let's go back to Mr. Warren.
Yeah, so I, I just want to, I think Dr. Mitchell Booker has a point in that, why, why is that last clause in there? Because you can't, you can't prove it either way. So why not just keep it out so that we're not sending a signal one way or the other?
Well, I think, I think the answer to that is that the huff felt like they have taken significant steps to protect the lake through silk fencing, through quick vegetation, use straw and, and all that. And so if, you know, they have the, the perception out there that they want to fight is that this was a problem. And so they wanted us to say that it was never a problem. We can't say that because we weren't on the site. But we can say if we inspect it and it meets our ordinances and our MS4 coordinator doesn't see a problem, we can, we can say that. And that doesn't seem unreasonable to me to say, hey, look, we've been there, we didn't see a problem, we're moving on. If they're going to do any development out there, they're going to build their houses, they're going to do whatever. They need to come in and file for their permits and move on.
Okay. I mean, I hate to keep complaining about that, but it does strike me as just a, a point too far. It's just unnecessary.
Don't worry, Dave, I'm about to exasperate that as well.
Okay. Go ahead.
I appreciate your responses.
Yeah, I, I appreciate everybody's comments. Go ahead, Mr.
I haven't heard back from you, so.
Okay, so I, I noticed there was no other raised hand, so I didn't.
No, that's okay, go ahead. We have, we have something else we need to cover real quick, but go ahead.
I mean, that's just such a big statement to say, we don't know if it poses any threat. I'm not saying that it does or doesn't. It's just such a overarching statement. We're looking at others' ordinances, other concerns that might protect our environmental resources a bit more because we don't necessarily agree with everything that's out there. So I really feel like this is just too large of a statement to make at any point. I don't think we'll ever have an ordinance that's going to be so precise that we can't say it's not going to cause a threat to our water supply. And even just water supply, that's kind of a little misleading too, in my opinion, you know, like, we don't know what kind of effects it may have or may not have. But again, it just feels like it's way too large of a statement.
And, and I, and I appreciate your point on that because you've taken sort of a different angle to it because you're saying that it's impossible to even make that statement under any circumstances. We couldn't make that statement about anyone residing on Lake Monroe. I, I hear that and that, that point's well made. Let's see, one more time, go around if there's anyone from the public who has comments or questions. And then we'll come back and see if there's any other comments or questions from plan commissioners, county commissioners. Okay, so Ms. Githens raised a point, Commissioner Githens raised a point about continuing the meeting because we do not have the agreement in front of us. We have notes on the agreement. You know, one of the questions I had, Mr. Schilling, is does this language that we're presented here and on our email match exactly the language in the, in the settlement agreement? And we don't know that just now. So you had said we can continue the meeting. Can you talk about what our options are, Mr. Schilling?
Well, we have the agreement. It's apparently been emailed to us. We can circulate that. And if, it would be helpful to get this done today, but it, so if we could recess in a cup, for a couple hours or three hours or however long, that would be helpful. But that's up to you.
Is there, is there any downside to recessing for longer than that, Mr. Schilling?
Well, we, we had agreed to, to have this meeting today. So, I mean, I guess if we can get it done today, that would be helpful.
One, one of the issues, of course, is the fact that we didn't have much notice and the public certainly didn't either. Is, is there, is there any way we can continue this for, I mean, what, what is our real deadline? Let's just think about it that way. Do we, do we, can we continue this for a week? Can we continue it for two days? Can we continue it for a day? There is a county council meeting tonight, so I, I don't want to bump up against that. What, what are your thoughts, Mr. Schilling?
Well, that's up to you. That's your call. You know, if you don't have time to make a decision, then, then that's up to you. If we could, if we could recess to tomorrow morning, that would be helpful, I think. But, you know, the sooner the better is what I'm going to say. That's all I can say.
Okay, so that is an interesting option if we could, of course, we have a commissioners' meeting in the morning tomorrow. I don't know if you were being sarcastic, but that was a good point. So we just have a lot of meetings. But I think it, it makes sense to give this some time to, to review these documents and certainly I would, I would like to hear, let's, let's do it maybe this way. Is there anyone from either the plan commission or the board of commissioners that wishes to, to vote on this item today and is unwilling to wait? Let's do it that way first.
I don't even have, I mean, I just checked my email and I don't even have the formal and final. So it would be, I, I'm willing to serve and to, to vote on it, but I don't even have it, so I don't know what we're really talking about.
Right. Our, our difficulty, and I don't see anyone, I do see a couple more hands, but those were probably questions or comments that we'll take in a moment. I certainly am concerned about setting a time for the meeting because we, we all had to do a doodle poll to make this meeting. We got the documents this morning. So I am not sure how we can get this great, wonderful group back together again in an efficient and effective way. My only suggestion would be, although there is a meeting tomorrow afternoon, my only suggestion would be that we, that we could maybe consider 24 hours, which would give the public some time and it would give, it would give us time. Any thoughts on that?
We've got a stormwater meeting tomorrow.
I know, three o'clock.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking that we either have to delay that meeting or do this one first and then that one. I don't know because we have set, we found a time that works and maybe we could do four o'clock.
Or maybe we could do it in conjunction with the stormwater meeting or no?
No. Separate agendas. Yeah. Thoughts?
I guess my only thought is we could meet for the stormwater, suspend that meeting, do this meeting, then come back to the stormwater.
We could.
And since, you know, we would need a quorum for stormwater, I'd be amenable to that.
Okay.
If it works for everyone else. Anything that works for most, I can be amenable to.
So, so for everyone who's on this call today, let's do it this way. Is there anyone who cannot meet at three o'clock on Wednesday, tomorrow? Okay, so it looks like we have a good time set up. We're going to need a motion, but before we have that motion, we've got two more hands raised now. Mr. McKim?
Yes, thank you. And I want to get back to something that Mr. Schilling had, had mentioned before with respect to the remedy, you know, with the trial set for a year out. I, I guess I just want to know, let's say we decide not to, not to mediate. We decide to just go full bore ahead with the, with the litigation. And let's say we get, you know, a jury and a judge that are terrifically favorable to, to our case. What, what, what's really, what, what's kind of the best case scenario? What can we really expect that a court would get us that ultimately this proposed mediation would not get us, other than the satisfaction of saying we were right all along?
Well, I guess, Jeff, my response would be, I think we would get paragraphs two, which would be fix it. If there's a problem, fix it. And if it's been fixed, it would, it just seems like it would have been a, a large expenditure of time for, for no great benefit.
So in other words, you're telling me essentially that the remedy would not be significantly greater than what we would get out of this mediation.
I, I don't believe so. I mean, I think that's why we focused on the interest of the county is to, is to ensure that that site is, is not problematic. And, you know, as far as being problematic is concerned, again, it's just problematic is defined as, as being against the ordinance. We can't, we can't expect people to be perfect. And so I, I don't know how you could ever prove certain things anyway. So it, it just seems to be, it's a reasonable statement to make. It's a reasonable process to undertake to get, to get, to move on and to accomplish what, what we really are, are supposed to accomplish. Go ahead.
That, to me, is the argument that is the most convincing is that once, once the property is in compliance, then all of the procedures that would be followed in the future are, follow the ordinance and follow normal procedure. And it prevents, it prevents further harm to both the huffs and to the community.
Okay. Great. Mr. Paul has a comment or question from the public?
Am I unmuted?
You're fine, we can hear you.
Okay, I put it in the chat also. It, I was wondering if the public will have access to the final documents and if so, where? It just doesn't seem like the public's given much time, as you guys have not been, to make a decision on something this important.
Yeah, we can, you know, we can post that on the, on the planning website.
If, and I was going to ask if we could get it posted, we're going to have to do something for the county calendar. If we could get it posted with the Zoom link on the county calendar as well, which is how most people access Zoom meetings, that would be great. Okay, does that help, Mr. Paul?
Absolutely.
Great. We will work on that. I haven't seen it yet either, so it's, it's a mystery. Okay. All right, so given the lack of a formal document, it's, and it seems like there is a consensus, would someone like to make a motion to continue the meeting?
There was one question in the chat from B Square Beacon that.
I answered that.
The one where it talks about how many votes are needed.
Oh, I did not answer, I did not see that. Thank you, thank you. I did not see that. Mr. Schilling, can you talk about what's needed to accept or, oh, I do see it now. Thank you so much. Do you want to talk about what is needed in terms of each body for a yes or no vote on this item?
A majority vote of each body.
From both, and from both bodies, correct?
Yes, yes.
Right, so if one body says no, the other says yes, it's still a no?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I hope that helps. Thank you so much for noticing that, Tron, I appreciate you. I've been reading a lot of chats and responding to a lot of chats, so thank you for that. So how about a motion?
First of all, I want to thank everybody that spent all the time in that, the meeting, the mediation yesterday. I mean, that was, that was like a marathon. And so I, I have to say thanks before we do anything else. But I'd like to move that we, we convene this meeting tomorrow afternoon at 3:00 PM. And I thank everybody who is able to join us.
Great, we have a motion and we have a second. I think we could take both of these bodies together, Mr. Schilling, correct, as a, as one for this motion?
Yeah, but again, the majority of each body.
Yes, majority of each body, correct. So yes, that's, that's fine.
I think we need to say 3:05 so we can actually meet for the stormwater, suspend that, and then meet for this one, instead of them both being exactly at three.
Are you both okay with 3:05?
Yes.
Sorry to be a stickler.
That's okay, thank you, thank you, Tron, I appreciate it. Okay, so with that, Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll for each of the two bodies?
You're on mute, Larry.
Yeah, just a second. I didn't prepare a voting sheet for this. Okay, this is the plan commission. I'll start with the plan commission. Jerry Pittsford?
Yes.
Abby Thompson is not present. Brittany Garitas?
Yes.
David Warren?
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry, Jeff McKim?
Yes.
Jim Stainbrook is not present. Julie Thomas?
My first vote is a yes.
Okay. Margaret Clements? I sent your, okay, Tron Arroy Randolph?
Yes.
I think I've got everybody. So it's, the vote is, am I correct, seven to zero?
Yes.
Okay, and for the commissioners, Lee Jones?
Yes.
Penny Giffens?
Yes.
And again, Julie Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, again, three oh for the commissioners, so the meeting will be continued till tomorrow. We will post this on the planning site, the link to this, as well as a copy of the formal settlement agreement for people to review and download. So we'll get that on as soon as we get a copy from the attorneys.
That's great, excellent. Anything else for, any further business we need to conduct today? I appreciate everyone's assistance. I appreciate everyone's assistance with all of this. Okay, so thank you all. If anyone in the public has further comments, please join us again tomorrow and, and share those comments or questions once we've read the final document. All right, uh, with that, I'm going to go ahead and say this meeting is continued till 3:05 PM, Wednesday, um, October 14th. Thanks, everyone.